Good evening. Welcome to the July 29th work session and call board meeting of the Barrow County Board of Education. It is 6:00 PM and the meeting is now called to order. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Callaway, second by Ms. Kelly. Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Move on to our superintendent's report.
Yes ma'am, thank you. Board members, I want to start tonight by just thanking our fantastic staff who have been diligently preparing for our students to return this Friday. As a matter of fact, we have some orientation events occurring as we speak. So some of our leaders are welcoming families on the campus right now. We've also been enjoying some professional learning, which you'll hear more about tonight. Our maintenance staffs have been working very hard all summer to prepare our campuses for the start of school. I see Mr. Webb back there. Thank you sir for your leadership. We appreciate you. Also want to thank our registration team. As you can imagine, it is a very, very busy time of year right now and we are working very hard to get everyone registered as quickly as we can so we can make sure those students can start as quickly as possible. Want to thank all of our community and staff members for participating in our Back to Bold event last week. It was wonderful. Our kids got a chance to have a number of things taken care of to prepare them for school such as backpacks, school supplies, haircuts, eye exams, and much more. But we were able to deliver approximately 2,500 backpacks to our students and about 1,100 pairs of tennis shoes so they could start the year off with some nice, fresh, new kicks. So, thank you for all of our, all of the members of our community who participated and donated to that effort. Several of us were also able to participate in a night of prayer. I want to thank our faith leaders in our community for leading that effort. It was nice to go. I got a chance to go to Russell before we all converged on Appalachia and just prayed over our schools for this coming school year. And finally, I want to thank you all, this Board of Education's work. We've been working really hard over the last six months to set the stage for strategic planning that will happen this, this school year. And you're going to hear much more about that from Dr. Brown when she presents tonight. But just want to thank you for the alignment work that's happening. We've got a chance to visit several schools and our staff is really excited about the work in front of us. And that concludes our report, my report.
Thank you, Dr. Laduff. We will move on to our presentations and discussions and start with Dr. Thompson.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to be with you as always. Tonight for the board, we have two items of information. We have two action items that we're going to ask the board to vote on the August 5th board meeting. And then we have one item of action that we're going to ask you guys, if possible, to take a vote on tonight at the call to board meeting portion. In the interest of time for our first item, the communications report, I'm not going to go through this because our second information item will be a little more extensive than what we go through. I'll just say that it is posted for your review and there's some really cool photos and videos linked in there about going back to school. If you haven't had time to look through the videos that our communications team put together for back to school to get parents and kids excited, you really should look at some of those. They're, they're very well done. So the second item of information we're going to talk about tonight is, is one of the most critical, if not the most critical for us, which is safety. Barrow County Schools has, for as long as I have worked here, put safety number one above everything else. And what we want to talk about tonight is to take a little time to talk about safety as we move into the 25, 26 school year. We met with our leaders a few, about a week ago. We had two twin focuses, one of which was learning. We wanted to refocus on measurable learning in the classroom, but our second focus was on safety. You know, we had the tragedy at Appalachia, September 4th. That gave us pause to reflect, to engage our community in some discussions on what we wanted to do to keep our schools safer. Our schools have always been safe places and they are places where tragedies like that have been minimized by the preparation a lot of people put into preparing for that. But we also know we have to respond and change as events change. And so we have spent a lot of time as a staff trying to work, to come up with layers of safety that we think are going to support our students and families. And what we want to do tonight is talk through some of those things. So that requires a whole team to do. So to minimize transitions, I'm going to ask them to go ahead and come on up. So we have Dr. JB Bowen, Mr. John Skinner, Ms. Jenny Persinger, Mr. Cole Valles, and Ms. Jennifer Houston. And what we're going to do tonight is focus on three areas of this. We're going to kind of review layers of safety that we have put in place over the years historically. We're also going to talk a little bit about some safety enhancements that we have coming onboard over the next year or so. We also want to take some time to talk about newly passed safety legislation in response to September 4th, what that looks like, what that law entails, and how Barrow County Schools is working to implement that with fidelity. And then finally, Ms. Houston's going to talk a little bit about the safety grant funds that we received from the state of Georgia over the last couple of years and intermittently over several years. And we want to talk about how we have used those funds to keep our schools safe. So I'm going to start out for the first section. I'm going to ask Mr. Dr. Bowen and Mr. Skinner to talk through some of our current safety enhancements.
Thank you. Before we review those, I do want to mention to our board and our visitors that several of us have had the opportunity in recent months, both formally and informally, to talk a lot about the school safety approach in Barrow County. School systems and law enforcement agencies have been interested in hearing about our community's best practices in creating safe schools for our students and staff, but also in our training in response to emergencies. The most common themes in all of those talks were relationships and partnerships. These are our greatest assets. Relationships with our Sheriff Judge Smith and the Barrow County Sheriff's Department, Barrow County Fire and Chief Brett Skinner, our representative, Holt Persinger. Also would add in Winder Police, Winder Fire, and partnerships with Northeast Georgia Health System, Advantage Behavior Systems, N-GMA, Homeland Security, just to name a few. The plans and processes that we have are only as good as the people we have working in these roles. Barrow County is blessed with some really fantastic people. So now let's look at the layers of enhancement through the years. And as we start back, we, wow, look at there, school resource officers, what do you know? SROs have been a topic of conversation and rightly so, as they play a vital part in our school safety plan. And we've had school resource officers for over 25 years. We will continue to be committed to school resource officers in all of our schools. As we move through the timeline there, starting at the top, going across the top, we have changed the hardware on our doors. School access is very different now than it was 20 or 30 years ago, when oftentimes you may find doors unlocked back then. You better not find them unlocked now. If you do, let me know. We move also to other enhancements such as security cameras. We are upgrading security cameras constantly. I was talking with one of our IT guys today about the latest and greatest coming down the pipe. I don't know if our budget folks will like that, but our security people do. Security vestibules are found in all schools now as a result of the Sandy Hook tragedy. And we moved through other things such as our audio enhancement, which also has a safety feature to it, as it has a, an emergency button as well to communicate with the front office. We added a safety and security officer position, Chief Skinner and Lance McNamara, Health Services Manager position. And those two guys have just been phenomenal in leading those departments as we, as we have improved greatly. Just in the past year, we've had an upgrade in school bus cameras. We did a full-scale exercise in March 2024, active shooter exercise. We added synergics in '24. We know how crucial synergics is to our, our safety plan. This board has approved additional SROs, which we will continue to pursue and add until we get to our magic number. And then of course, we added weapons detection systems back in the spring. We'll continue to do weapons detection in our middle and high schools each day, each morning. And we'll talk a little bit more about our School Dog Safety App, which we've introduced to you before, and now we're using system-wide. So there's a snapshot of, of us through the years for each of the layers and enhancements. And this timeline will continue, as we will continue to add enhancements and continue to add layers in the future. Now, John Skinner will talk to us about our procedures.
Good evening. Before I get into the emergency procedures, and I call it the EPP, so when you hear me refer to that, you'll understand what I'm saying. But we have an emergency operation plan as well that each school does, and I call it the EOP or S-EP. So I wanted to clarify the difference between the two. Our, our EOP is a comprehensive plan that details roles and responsibilities and coordinations, strategies for various types of incidents. So it's really a detailed plan. Our emergency procedures, which is what you see on the board here, is, is basically procedures for individual or teams for different types of hazards or risks that we've identified, such as evacuation, fire drills, et cetera. You'll understand that. So when we look at, we, we updated the emergency procedures here. We put a planning team together comprised of staff, administrators, SROs, public safety partners, et cetera. We started on this several years ago, about two years ago actually, after 9/4, we revisited what we had already updated and kind of went, pulled the team back together and went through a few of the proposed changes. What you're seeing now on slide, on this slide, is just a quick statement. I think Dr. Laduff says it the best. The statement basically says there's no plan can anticipate every possible scenario. So staff training and preparedness is the key to responding appropriately. That's what that statement is. That's something new that we added into our emergency procedures. All right, so looking at this next slide, you'll see that these are titles, risks or hazards we have identified in our emergency procedures that we are addressing throughout the procedure. MyEOP is a new app we've had for a couple of years. It has all of our procedures in it. This is available to all of our staff if they want to put it on their phones. Gives them something they can have right at their fingertips. This year with the MyEOP app that we've just updated, it comes with fillable forms. So that's a new feature for MyEOP. I think it's something we can expand on in the future too with some fillable forms. Once you have that plan on your phone, it doesn't require Wi-Fi, cell access or anything. You'll always be able to access that. All right, moving on to the next slide. It's going to be, this is synergics, blueprint, safety blueprint, some mapping system. It's not only going to be beneficial for us, for the school system, but for our public safety partners as well. This project's underway. This is also going to be a part of HB 268 that Dr. Thompson will talk about later. And this, this project's underway. It's probably going to take us about five or six months to get all of our campuses up to date. But we started now. We've done a pilot at C-FIT and actually finished that up this morning. And so far, I'm liking everything we see. I got to share it with Greg earlier today, and he was liking everything he is seeing. And I'll also be able to share it with our public safety partners in the next couple of weeks at a meeting we'll have with them. All right, so before I go any further, and this is not a slide, I should have put a slide with his picture up. But I'd like to introduce Rob Kurat. He is our new security technical coordinator. His very first day is going to be August the 1st. I like to call it a tactical IT position. That's my name for the job. I'm not sure if Congress has approved of that. But Rob has come into us with over 30 years of law enforcement experience, where he's served in many different ranks. He also has an IT background as well, and he manages a similar systems to what we have in the school system, such as access control, et cetera. Having him onboard is going to be, going to be a relief, or a little bit of relief or stress for our IT department, as well as our maintenance department too. So we're excited to have him onboard. He's beginning August 1st, which is the first day of school, so he's going to have to hit the ground running that day. He has been here with me for a few days, helping with certain tasks and projects. We're glad to have him onboard. Would you like to say anything?
Good evening. I'm joining you tonight just to talk to you about our new anonymous reporting app. It's going, it's called Stop It. Right now, we already have an anonymous reporting form and tip line. However, just like we've been adding layers and evolving, this app and platform allows us to have an incident response center or team monitor all the calls or tips that come in, and then they're able to essentially kind of triage them. Now admin, school admin and district admin will still get all of that information as well, but this is, for example, at like 3:00 in the morning or 2:00 in the morning, that sort of thing. This team will help to monitor that tip line. It not only does for suspicious activity, but also for mental health concerns. We really like that aspect of it. It links straight to the crisis text line. And it also can, anything from bullying or anything like that as well. So the expected launch for this is September of 2025. We're now on boarding. And I'd like to thank Kevin McCage with our wonderful IT department, because he really helped research a lot of different apps and led that charge to find the best one for us. So I'd like to thank Kevin and John Sinclair and his team.
Quick review, School Dog. An app that was developed by a retired superintendent to give us a tool to use when we're doing our safety audit walks. Gives us a chance to, a place to house our data that we can run reports from. We piloted that in four schools, five different locations, actually. We did it in five locations instead of four, I'm sorry. And we have now got, we're getting our administrators and SROs trained this week and next week for all of our schools. So we will have that on all of our sites and all our admin and SROs will be able to use that this school year. Looking forward to using School Dog. Go Dogs.
Thank you, Dr. Bowen. And I hope what comes out crystal clear when you hear all of that is that safety is always going to be an evolving process and our staff are constantly looking at what is next in the area. Because safety is all about layers. No particular layer is going to be the one that solves every problem. We need a consistent web of layers, and that's what we're looking to add as we go forward. In the wake of September 4th, our Georgia legislature was pressed into action in a very committed way, and that was something I can remember in the, just the days after Speaker Burns, the governor, several of them reached out and said, you know, we want to make this a priority in this session in school safety. What can we do as a legislature to improve safety across Georgia? We are very happy to report that we think what came out of that is really good for Georgia schools and will long-term, not just in Barrow County, but throughout the state, really enhance safety and security for families and students. This culminated in HB 268. This was signed into law on April 28th, 2025. You can see the governor, Governor Kemp signing off on that. And you'll notice there are quite a few Barrow people who were invited to participate because what I want to impress upon people was how much our local delegation led on this. Our local delegates on both the House and Senate signed, were sponsors on every aspect of this bill. And the bill was overall carried and championed throughout the process by Mr. Holt Persinger, who was with us this evening. And if you've not already told him, I hope you really will take some time after this meeting, the next time you see him, to give your appreciation, because I can tell you that was not an easy task to do, and that required a lot of coordination and work. And one of the things I can tell you is there is very much interest in what Barrow County Schools and Barrow County, the community, wanted to see happen. And they, they spent an entire, many months talking to superintendents, parents, school leaders across the state. But we were always given heavy input into what came out of there, and we're very pleased. There's going to be some components of it that are challenging to implement, and that's what we kind of want to walk through. But they are, we think, going to long-term be really, really good for Georgia students across the state. So this is an omnibus legislation, and in this case, it is long. It is 57 pages. That was, if not the longest bill that was passed in the last session, it was certainly one of the longer ones. It has a lot of pieces to it. And so what we want to talk about tonight is a general overview of it, and then how we in Barrow County Schools working to implement each aspect of that. One of the key components of it was changes in Georgia law to speed up the transfer of critical student records between schools, but also to provide more guidance on how law enforcement provides information to schools and how other agencies communicate, not just on threats, but also on, you know, supports that students may need in terms of mental health, because we know how critical that is. So there, and we're going to talk more about that in depth in just a second. There are also, and you've seen pieces of this in the first part of the presentation, there's a section called Ricky and Alyssa's Law. This refers to both our own Coach Aspenwall, who we tragically lost in the incident, but also Alyssa, who's a student at Parkland, whose father has worked to try to get panic alert systems in multiple states and has succeeded in doing that. This particular portion of the law requires every Georgia school district to have a mobile panic alert system, but also to have a 24/7 tip line, and also to have integrated mapping software. And you've heard components of two of those things just now from Mr. Skinner and Ms. Valles. And additionally, we already have the synergic system in place. In fact, about 90% of Georgia school districts already had a panic alert system in place. This just simply adds the other 10% to have that implemented within a year. One of the things we really appreciate about this bill is it viewed safety holistically. It's not just about always hardening of schools, but it looked at the fact that students at risk need supports. And so this bill provides funding and support, as well as trainings that will be required in the coming years in mental health, violence prevention, and suicide prevention, all of which are very important. It also will eventually have changes to how we do school safety planning in Georgia, and particularly emphasizing, emphasizing behavior threat assessment teams. Only about 40 or 50 of the 180 traditional school districts in Georgia have a formal behavior threat assessment team. I'm happy to say Barrow County is one of them, and we've had that in place since at least 2017, if not a little bit earlier, using the Secret Service model. This will develop out of more robust GMA model, which will be incorporated into school safety plans statewide. And then increased penalties in juvenile code for serious threats that students may make against individuals or students. And this is just an broad overview. There are more pieces to it than that. And we also appreciate that they phase in at different timeframes. We're not asked to have all of these things done immediately, because some of them require heavy lifts to get in place. And so time has been built into the schedule, and we'll look at that in just a second, to allow school systems to integrate this appropriately in safety. One of the things we do want to focus on, because it was the most immediate change, and it's actually going to change one of our regulations and potentially some policies down the road, is how we transfer student records. So I'm going to ask Ms. Persinger to talk a little bit about how that will look under the new law.
Good evening. Thank you. So while it's always been important that we have the appropriate student records for the students that are coming into our school system, this law makes that a little more defined and puts, changes some timelines. So Dr. Thompson referred to a regulation that we will be changing. You can see here, I kind of put a pre, what it looks like now and what post we are changing to. So parents have always been able to review any records about their child. They let us know that they need that, and it says mutually agreed upon time, which generally is considered about 45 days. That is now changed. A parent can request an electronic copy, not just to come in and review, but for us to provide a copy. And we have until 5:00 PM on the third business day following that request to get that done. So that just intensifies quickly how our staff will respond to such requests. There's also, just in general, the transfer of student records, as we said, making sure we know who's coming into our schools. So previously, when a student enrolled with us from another school system, we would request records, and they had up to 10 days to mail or otherwise deliver those to us. Now they must come electronically, again, on the third business day after we've requested them. And while Barrow County has been well ahead of the game of having electronic student records, we've been there for over a decade. Some of our surrounding counties have not, and we often have been waiting on mailed records. So that was very important for us to communicate to our legislators that that would be very helpful if we could move to everyone having electronic records and having to provide them on a faster timeline. So we're working with other districts on that. It does also, the bill defines we're considered critical records, that we must have in those three days. So it's an academic transcript for students, their attendance records, their discipline records, any record of a guilty finding of a felony, and any psychological evaluations. Those are part of what's considered critical, that must be sent to us within those three days. And then it also gives us some provisions. If after 10, we are still not able to get them, and it writes in there that our RISAs will designate someone on their staff to be a student affairs officer that we can kind of work with. If another district is not able to get us those records so quickly, we can kind of defer that to a RISA position that will help facilitate that for us. But then if within 10 days we don't have that, we are able to move students to remote learning or hold a case management consultation, just to be sure that we know what services that child needs and that we're meeting their needs before they're in our building with our students. And then there's also a possible policy change coming up, because we have in policy right now that we have 30 calendar days before we withdraw students. Like now, this is changed that to 10 days. So just know that there may be a policy change coming before you soon. And then I just want to talk about what does that mean right now for our registration team? We did, actually, I counted these numbers on Sunday, and we had already had more than 1,500 registration applications, and that's just applications, not students. If a family has multiple students in their household, then we've, my, our team has worked through a lot to make sure that we have all that we need from those families and we're getting them in. Somebody has to review all those documents. Do we have what they're uploading? We have joked that one of the proof of residency, where we show where you live recently, was a picture of them standing in front of their house. And unfortunately, that's not something we can take. So we're constantly going back and forth with parents to make sure we get the documents that we need to get their children enrolled. And then once we have them in our system, the school data clerks and other district personnel are working to get those records, either for students coming into us, or the students that are now telling us they're moving to another district to meet those important timelines. And then there's also a piece that we let parents know now when we've received those records, so that they know that all that is clear and their child is, is fully enrolled with us. So it's, it does mean more for the staff we already have, but we think it's important work to get done.
I have a question, just a quick question. I'm sorry. Records, when this young man, the shooter, he had been investigated in Jackson County, they did not find him guilty. So would we still receive records of any child that had ever been investigated for this type of, you know, concern? Or is that not going to be a part of this policy?
This piece right here is just about school records, and that would not have been part of any school record that he had. There are some other pieces of the legislation that will, is that part of what we?
Share that information? Okay, I, thank you.
Thank you. We wanted to focus on that one, because that was by far the most immediate change that the bill brought in. And as Ms. Persinger said, our team are having to work very hard, and we're having to build new processes to make that happen. We're better equipped than most districts, but three days is still aggressive, but we're going to meet it, because that's what's necessary, not just for safety, but students deserve in a modern setting where everything is virtual, to be able to have the records they need in place, whatever district they're in. It's, there's no reason why a student should have to wait to find out that they need special education supports, ESAL supports, things of that nature. That was the most immediate change, but there are some further ones that we want to talk through, including that piece that Ms. Bradford asked about in HB 268. So in going through, one of the things that we're excited about, every district in Georgia based on size will be funded through grants for at least one student advocate position. This was originally in some earlier versions of the law, the student is a mental health clinician, but it's broadened to give a little more flexibility. In a district our size, we would receive one position. There are some districts larger that might receive two or three in that instance. And that funding, we used to create it. We have to wait on that one a little bit, because there's some guidance has to be built around the job descriptions. I will tell you, Barrow is one of, I think Dr. Lowe is about nine districts that are project aware. Yeah, she's open house, that's right. Sorry. There's about nine districts that are part of the project aware of mental health supports. And in those particular instances, the Department of Education is actually asking for the job descriptions for those coordinators, because they think that's a good starting point. So once again, we're one of districts on the cutting edge of how we're supporting our students in mental health. But that's a position that will go towards supporting students in whatever outcome the district deems necessary to support them, mental health, anything of, in that nature. So we're very pleased that there's that funding component built in. There'll be annual required trainings in suicide and violence prevention. We're waiting on the Georgia Department of Education to provide those trainings. That's also part of the law. When those come in, we will work to make sure our staff and our students are trained on that. There's also sections of the law that gets to Ms. Bradford's question, where if you have an official encounter, and an official encounter is very technically defined, and I'm not going to go into it here, because really it's law enforcement, they're going to have to make the determination of what is to have to make the determination of what is an official encounter. The law includes very specific language that in certain instances, even if there's not necessarily evidence to sort of charge someone with a crime, there still may be information that needs to be reported in writing to local school districts. And again, right now, that is really not a school system function, that is much more a law enforcement function. But that is part of the law, that they will need to have that in place specifically for that reason. As we mentioned, there's a 24/7 monitor tip line. We have already talked about that a little bit. We talked about behavior threat assessment teams. There's also potentially a subject to future appropriations. There was talk eventually about having a database where students that had gone through a threat assessment process or otherwise been convicted of a threat might be communicated through that. That is not in the final version of the bill, but there is subject to appropriations, some talk of a possible statewide alert system in future years that might serve a similar function, maybe a little more flexibility, things of that nature, but that is still in the bill. And one of the things I do want to say to everyone here, one of the things we've made sure is that when we have students that go through our formal threat assessment process, we want to make sure those records get transferred. We want to make sure that is part of their critical records, and we certainly hope other districts that have similar processes will do the same, because that's how we keep schools safe. And then you can finally see the timeline of how these things roll in. So by October 1st, per the law, we had to update our memorandum of understanding with facilities that provide onsite educational services. We've already reviewed that and found that we're compliant with that. We have to have, again, language with our law enforcement partners to include specific terms and conditions related to student information. We're in the process of doing that. We're working with Sheriff's Office on that currently. We have a meeting scheduled to kind of talk about that. That will not be a new contractor, or it will be an addendum to the existing agreement that we have on that, just on data sharing pieces. We mentioned Ricky and Alyssa's Law. We are already compliant on that with the panic alert system, but that for districts that are not is not until July 1, 2026. The mapping function that Mr. Skinner talked about is also not due till July 1, 2026. We're hopeful to have that done within the school year and have that operational before we go home, same with July 1, 2026. The school safety plan changes won't go into effect until January 1, 2027. That is because GMA has to provide guidance along with several other organizations in partnerships, some of the sheriff's associations. So they will put that together, and once we have that, we will make sure that our plans are compliant with that. There are also requirements, and you can see on the training for suicide awareness and violence prevention, we have to wait for those to be released. Those will be in effect for the '26, '27 school year. And then funding and job outline for the student advocacy, advocacy, specialists, sorry, will be '26, '27 as well, and hopefully the appropriations will. So there's a lot of pieces to this, and like a lot of bills, we expect there'll be some refinement to this in future legislative sessions. But ultimately, we think this is a really positive thing, and we're excited to be implementing this, even if sometimes it is a heavy lift, because it's the right thing to do for Georgia students and for Barrow students, more importantly. So before we transition to the next section off field, any questions anybody has on HB 268?
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I think this is great, a great start, but as with anything, once they do implement, and it's implemented, and it's now law, you know, once we put it in, we can hope that other districts will do. But is there any teeth in it that says, if they don't comply and they don't do it, what will happen? What will the state do if they don't comply with the law?
I can say two things. One is when we were at the Yale conference over the summer, Phil Hartley, who many of you might know, has been the education lawyer for Georgia for as long as I've been in education, he made the statement, "There's a lot of great things in this bill, but they'll only work if all of you out there implement them." And he's 100% correct on that. That was something I know in some of the discussions and the legislative conversation and the hearings that came up. I think the best I can say is that's something to have conversations with our local legislation about, and I know they are monitoring closely the implementation of the bill. And certainly, if things are not being implemented, my guess is action will be taken on that, but that's not my place to say. That's what I would assume, based on the conversations I was privy to in the public hearings.
Okay, so there's nothing actually written in the law itself that says, if they don't do this, and this is what's going to happen, or this is what the next step is?
My guess is the answer is?
No.
If you don't do it, there may be coming in in future sessions, because the expectation is this is state law, and every district needs to be in compliance with this, but not as I'm aware of in the particular provisions of the bill as it currently stands.
Dr. Thompson, just to add to that, I would assume that any district that did not comply would be subject to legal issues more than likely.
I would certainly imagine that is a possibility.
Thank you. And the reason I ask that is because there's another district that I'm working with a parent on with IDEA, and nothing has happened. There's children falling through the cracks in that district, and nothing's happened. So that's why I want to make sure.
We can't control other districts.
We can't control that. I'm just wanting to make sure that, yeah.
That's what we're trying to make sure that we're.
I know, we do it, and we follow it.
Hey, Dr. Thompson, I just wanted to say thanks to you and all of the team that worked so diligently over this last year with our representatives, especially Representative Persinger, in getting this bill through. I know that it was a load to carry, and so we appreciate y'all spearheading that and getting something through legislation. Appreciate it.
Absolutely, it was our pleasure. Any other questions on this portion?
Uh-uh.
Well, one of the other things that we have been fortunate to receive over the last few years is safety grants from the state, as well as several federal and privately raised funds in the wake of September 4th. And so Ms. Houston is going to come up and give a little bit of a history on what we have spent those funds on, and answer your questions on those.
So we talked a lot about what we've done, what we have to do in the future, and we've had the fortunate, we've been fortunate enough to get some grants. I would love to say, you know, it helps relieve our taxpayers, but we all know that this is taxpayer money, whether it's state, federal, or local, but we have had some community donations too. So I just want to run through some of the safety grant money and how we spent that. So in 2019, we received $450,000, and this was used to, for access control, and that was about $420,000 in visitor management software. That's when you go into a school, you have to scan your ID, and it does a little bit of a background check on you. Also for some AEDs and some security cameras. We continued in 2020, we received $450,000, and that continued the access control, the visitor management, the security cameras, and additional AEDs. We did not receive safety security grant for 2021 or 2022. So for 2023, we received $800,000, and those funds supported our panic alert system, our sentecics. That was over $1 million. And so thankfully, Sheriff Judd Smith chipped in some of the security, the safety camera money, the $248,000. We did not receive grant funds in 2024. So how can we fund a yearly reoccurring expense with a grant that may or may not get to us every year? So that's just something to kind of think about. In 2025, we did receive a little over $800,000, and we used those funds on weapon detectors and supplies, and also classroom phones. This adds up to over $1 million, so we had to fund a portion of these funds with our local property taxes. In May, we applied for the Project SERVE grant through the U.S. Department of Education, and we were awarded $1.1 million. We can only use these funds for the temporary small pod of a five-classroom unit that was immediately available to accommodate some of our classroom space. Also, the larger pod currently being leased to replace the classrooms on J-Hall, but they will only cover through March of 2026. This grant covers the transportation to Chi East when the students were there for four months. It also covers substitute costs for the past year to allow staff to take time for breaks or mental health services. And it covered the additional administrator we added to support the students and staff at Chi East and the pod. Those were the items it could cover. We asked for more, but we were only told that the limit is around $1 million. The SERVE grant did not cover grading for the pod, that was about $600,000. Project SERVE does not cover construction costs. As I said, Project SERVE only covers the pod lease until March of 2026, so that leaves a balance of about $1.5 million. It also does not cover future renovations at Appalachia High School. So all in all, we could spend about $5 million or more, and we will be reimbursed this $1.1 The Barrow County Community Foundation awarded the school district approximately $410,000. $179,000 went to the district to cover therapy costs and substitutes. $230,000 went directly to Appalachia High School for their identified needs, such as the calming areas, furniture, therapy dogs, silencing the bumpers on the weights in the weight room, sound systems, mental and social curriculum, exam fees, and sports reimbursements. After the tragedy of September 4th, our legislators gave all school districts an additional $21,635 per school out of their 2025 amended state budget. Then for the 2026 budget, they supported all schools in Georgia with $47,165 per school. So this year, we will have $68,800 per school in security grant money. We have a meeting coming up in August set up to compile a list of security enhancement requests, such as access control updates, cameras, speaker sound system upgrades, curtains, radios, and other items that House Bill 268 requires. We are extremely appreciative of the U.S. Department of Education, the Georgia legislators in our community for the funds we have received. It has been such a blessing to our school district, students, and staff. And this is just a short list of other safety and security enhancements that we cover locally or we cover with our ELOS sales tax funds for larger projects, that's school resource officers, cameras, mental health reimbursements, security vestibles, AEDs, security at events, safety and security officer and staff, parking lot attendants, safety training software, audio enhancements, the camera subscriptions, community platform, communication platforms, safety applications, emergency preparedness manuals, and many more items not listed here, all paid for with taxpayer money in one form or another, whether it's property taxes or sales taxes. And that concludes this part of the presentation.
So as we wrap this up and open it up for final questions, I hope what we've impressed upon you today is that Barrow County Schools has both historically and going into the future, put safety as our top priority, and we will continue to do so. There's a lot of people, some of which you have heard from, many of whom you haven't, who work in our schools and our district every day, who do everything they can to keep students safe. And we know we have a tragedy like September 4th that gives us all pause. All we can do is evaluate what we're doing and get back to work, and that's what we have tried to do. It's what our Georgia Legislature has done, that's what our community has done in coming together, and we appreciate everyone. This is the right work for us to be doing. We are focused this year on learning, and we're focused on safety, and that is the two most important things any school district can ever focus on. I will be happy, and the group will be happy, to entertain any final questions that you have.
Dr. Thompson, I do have one final question, and I think this might be for Dr. Bowen and Chief Skinner. Usually when a tragedy such as this happens, I'm just curious, have we received an invitation from the county to participate in an after-action report?
So we've done a couple of debriefs.
Okay.
We haven't done an official after-action.
An official, yeah.
Typically, that's done by a third party.
Yep.
And I think GMA was going to try to help us coordinate that. I don't know the timeframe and what that would be like, so.
Okay. Well, thank you for that update. I appreciate that. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? We appreciate your time, and thank you to everyone who took part in this presentation and those who have been doing this work, this important work. Thank you. All right, so now we're going to move on to some of the action items we had, so I'm going to ask Mr. St. Clair to come up and talk about the system copier contract.
In April of 2024, the board approved a new three-year contract for copier services, went to low-bid respondent SOS of Athens, Georgia. The amount was $277,000 for yearly fixed costs and a cost of 3.7 cents per page for color copies made by the district. Black and white copies were included in the contract. In FY25, we made a few adjustments. Hole punch attachments were added to two copiers at Warner Bar High School. One copy each was upgraded to color capability from black and white at the Jackson House, Yargo, and Statum. Each facility's authorized a color copier if they request it. The district pays for the lease costs, and the facility pays for the per copier cost, per copy cost in that arrangement. A new copier was added to county line to address gaps in coverage. They were undersized when we started the new contract. And notably, new copiers were added for growth. We did one at Bassett 2, two for the new pods at Appalachia, one for the new pod at Warner Bar High School, and one for the PAC. So six new copiers added during FY25. In addition, the Sims Academy has a pre-existing contract for another copier, expires next year, that's used in one of their CTE classes. That was not included in the April 24th board presentation, but in the interest of being inclusive and giving you the whole picture, we're now providing that information, including those numbers in what we're presenting to you now. The, just as an item of information, the variable cost for color copies for FY25 was about $24,000, representing about $630,000 color copies made in the district. So the financial impact is an additional $32,274.48 per year, bringing the FY2026 total to $309,932.40 in fixed costs, those copier leases, out of the district's copier budget, and color copy costs remain the same at 3.7 cents per color copy made, paid out of either a mix of district funds for administrative facilities and school copier budgets for schools. The superintendent recommends approving an increase in the fixed yearly cost of copier services of $32,274.48, bringing the yearly total to $309,932.40.
Move to consent agenda?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one is policy IFBG, the Internet Acceptable Use Policy. The district's current policy IFBG, the Internet Acceptable Use Policy, was last revised in June of 2004 and last reviewed in November of 2016. Recent action by the Georgia State Legislature, specifically Senate Bill 351, the Protecting Georgia's Children on Social Media Act of 2024, requires that we update our AUP to be in compliance with the bill, that the AUP be approved by the board by October 1st of 2025, and then uploaded to the DOE for approval by October 15th. Senate Bill 351 was not quite as comprehensive as the other one we've talked about today, but it was 31 pages of material to go through. So rather than revising the old policy, the new policy is a complete rewrite. We incorporated relevant components from the old policy, and then, of course, all the various pieces required by the new Senate Bill 351. We've attached, for your review, I'm not going to bring them up now, but for your view, both the new AUP, the old AUP for comparison, and a new regulation that's not subject to, required to be voted on by the board, but is a companion piece to the new AUP. Financial impact, there is no financial impact for adoption of this new version of the AUP. There is, however, a financial consideration if we don't. If we fail to adopt the new AUP or fail to get the DOE approval, Senate Bill 351 includes a provision to withhold funds from districts who fail to submit and gain DOE approval of a board-approved policy by October 1st for the approval and October 15th for the deadline. So the recommendation is that the superintendent recommends placing the new version of policy IFBG, Internet Acceptable Use Policy, on the table for review, to be removed from the table and voted upon at the September 2nd board meeting. Happy to answer any questions.
Move to consent.
All right, thank you.
Ms. St. Clair? Last action item tonight, and this is the one that we would like to ask the board to consider approving tonight. We have had a longstanding relationship with Foothills Charter Regional High School, which is one of multiple finishing schools in Georgia. They operate out of two of our facilities, one at Sims, one at Russell. They serve both students who can enroll there because they're 18 years of age. They also enroll certain program students from us between 16 and 18 years who still remain on our books, but who are served at Foothills. And basically, Foothills allows them to do self-paced courses, evening courses. It allows them, for students who are struggling with a traditional setup, to be successful in that. So the agreement you have, both operates how we will work the program and student component of that, but also about the two facility usage agreements related to our sites. You will also notice there is an addendum to that, which is a technology piece. Prior to last year, Foothills enrolled, or prior through last year, Foothills enrolled or employed several of our technicians to basically provide support during the evening. They have now moved to a model where they're just going to reimburse us what they were paying them directly, and we would pay our paying them directly, and we would pay our staff to be on call and available. So that particular document just outlines how it's going to be the same people doing the same work. It's just the money flows a little differently, and because there no longer are Foothills employees, but there are employees again during that time, we wanted to have some regulations in place to make sure that worked correctly. So we would recommend the night the board consider approving this and signing it tonight. The reason being, because school is starting on Friday, and they're starting very soon for Foothills as well, and we'd like to have this agreement in place by then. But I am happy to answer any questions you have about this agreement or about Foothills.
A quick question I have, Dr. Thompson.
Yes, sir.
Is the, in the contract, it states that there's a tiered approach, and as we have two systems. Can you tell me what tiers both of those facilities are at?
Yes, sir. What Mr. Calloway is referring to is that as part of the facility usage agreement, depending on the enrollment and attendance at a particular site, Foothills reimburses the school district at a different rate. So there are three tiers, tier one, two, and three. We have two sites, Sims and Russell's, they are, Russell, they are based on previous attendance and enrollment, both tier three sites, which basically means the district will receive a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Foothills for that site usage for both sites for a total of three hundred thousand. And then additionally, we should this year receive ten thousand dollars per site for the tech support, which should be a total of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars under this agreement.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
Anything else? All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And now, I'd like to welcome our new chief academic officer, Dr. Brown. It's her first meeting with us, and we're glad to have you.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight's chief academic officer report includes one item of information, three action items for your consideration at the August 5th Board of Education meeting, and one action item for tonight's called board meeting. So first, with our, our action item, it's all about our preparation for the 25-26 school year. So as we've prepared for the 25-26 school year, one of the priorities of the board and the superintendent has been to increase alignment and clarity regarding teaching and learning practices within our school system. So I'm really excited to get to share this collaborative work tonight that you all have participated in and, and led. So we started July 10th, we had the opportunity for a whole board training, and during this session, we began by revisiting and affirming the belief statements that you as a board developed. Megan, you can switch it. These belief statements form our collective commitment to prioritizing student success and safety, elevating literacy as an academic priority, driving continuous improvement through data and accountability, providing equitable access to resources and opportunities for students, supporting our educators with meaningful compensation and professional growth, and partnering with our families and communities as co-owners of student success. So then, Dr. Thompson and I led a review of key system achievement data, including DIBELS, NWEA MAP, and milestones, and we had lots of great conversations as we took a deep dive into our current performance, and that guided the next step in the work. So together, we worked to develop five measurable district goals. Now, it is important to understand that, for everyone, that we are going to engage in that full strategic planning process this school year. We're really excited about that work. And so what we really wanted to do was put some short-term goals in place, so we set five goals to provide some immediate clarity and alignment. These set the tone for accountability, they foster a mindset of continuous growth, and we want to ensure that every school and team knows that we're working together. So we're going to go through some of those goals and what is, or those five goals, they, we really key in on literacy throughout four of the five goals, and then we also have a big focus on reading on grade level for students. So our first goal that we'll highlight tonight is by June of 2026, the percentage of all K through 2 students performing at the average achievement level or higher will increase by five percent as measured by the end-of-year MAP reading growth. One of the things that Dr. Thompson included with that work and on the slide for us here is you can see, we wanted to quantify what that five percent would be, and so that would be one hundred and fifty-six students. So we want to make sure that anytime we set goals and we're talking about numbers and data, that we understand that each number is an individual student, individual child that we're working to support. The next goal, by June of 2026, the percentage of all third through fifth grade students reading at or above grade level will increase by five percent as measured by the Georgia Milestones ELA End of Grade. And you can see there that that five percent would be one hundred and sixty-three students that we're, we're wanting to be able to, in addition to all students, but wanting to increase that achievement. All right, the next goal, at the middle school level, by June 2026, the percentage of all sixth through eighth grade students reading at or above grade level will increase by five percent as measured by the Georgia Milestones ELA End of Grade. And then at the high school level, by June 2026, the percentage of all students in grades nine through twelve, reading at or above grade level will increase by five percent as measured by the Georgia Milestones, Milestones Literature and Composition II End of Course Test. We did also add a math-focused goal for the high school level. So that goal, by June 2026, the percentage of students in grades nine through twelve performing proficient or above in math will increase by five percent as evidenced by the Georgia Milestones Algebra Concepts and Connections End of Course Test. Okay, so that led into the next part of the work, which included the development, and this is all still at the July 10th meeting, included the development of a proposed policy, which we're excited to talk about today, BAB, School Board Governance. That outlines a clear and aligned vision for teaching and learning in the Barrow County school system. So this policy does three critical things. One, it affirms the board's core beliefs. Second, it establishes a unified system of teaching and learning. And third, it creates a foundation for accountability and support. So here's some important components of this policy. First, our instruction is grounded in the Georgia Standards of Excellence. This means that across all schools and grade levels, we are aligning what we teach to clear, rigorous academic standards. Second, the policy outlines our approach to instructional resources. So teachers will have consistent access to high-quality materials that are aligned to the standards. At the same time, we recognize and honor the professional judgment of our teachers. They'll continue to have the flexibility to use additional standards-aligned resources to meet the, the needs of our students. And third, the policy emphasizes the importance of monitoring student learning through a balanced assessment system. That includes both formative assessments, which help guide instruction in real time, and summative assessments that help us measure progress over time. So in terms of accountability, the policy emphasizes not just goal-setting, but that growth-focused approach. Dr. Leduff loves to say, when we achieve our goals, we celebrate, but when we fall short, we reflect and we improve. So this policy that you all created is more than just a government, governance tool, it's a framework to connect every level of Barrow County schools from the boardroom to the classroom around one clear mission, and that's helping every Barrow student learn more, grow more, and achieve more. All right, so then, we took it to the Leadership Summit. So you can see this alignment here. With your beliefs, goals, and policy in hand, we brought together our school and district leaders for the Leadership Summit on July 21st. So during the summit, from a teaching and learning perspective, our leaders engaged in analyzing system and school-level data, reviewing the board beliefs and our system goal, our 25-26 goals, participating in some vertical discussions and conversations, and then, of course, planning for the start of the year, we had six different breakout sessions that individuals went to. So this summit laid the groundwork for instructional coherence, and it empowered our, our leaders to carry this forward to their schools. All right, so next, we move into pre-planning. So our faculty and staff have returned. We're so excited about that. They've been hard at work, engaged in professional learning, so you can see, we have pictures of different things that have been happening. They've been preparing their classrooms, analyzing data, collaborating to design instruction. Their energy and creativity, it's just been really exciting and inspiring as we've been able to prepare for our students. So Dr. Leduff and I had the privilege of spending the last week visiting our schools, welcoming the staff back, and will continue, we have a couple more schools to, to get to, but we've used these visits to then reinforce the alignment between the board's direction and the daily instructional practice, and of course, to thank the staff for their critical work that they're doing with students. And then all of these efforts culminate this Friday, when we'll open our doors and welcome our students for the 25-26 school year. So thanks to the meaningful work of this board, our dedicated staff, we are excited to enter the year with, enter, into the year with clarity, alignment, and purpose, and it's going to be an incredible school year for our Barrow bold students. Are there any questions?
I just have one comment, Dr. Brown. I was incredibly excited to see all those SMART goals up there, so I appreciate all the hard work that your team has done, so thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
Thank you. Okay, so now we'll move on to our action items for the August 5th, 2025 Board of Education meeting, and our first action item is policy BAB, which was just discussed more in-depth as an information item. And so the superintendent recommends placing proposed policy BAB, School Board Governance, on the table for public review and comment at the August 5th Board of Education meeting. Okay, the second action item is the NWEA MAP Contract, and you, you all have analyzed our MAP data, and the Northwest Evaluation Association Measurements of Academic Progress, so NWEA MAP. Growth is an assessment tool that we use for measuring achievement and growth. It is, it can be used with grades K through 12 for math, reading, and language usage, but we will use that grades K through 8. It's administered three times per school year. It provides a measure of students' academic growth along the learning continuum of skills during the school year and between school years. MAP data allows schools to differentiate and adjust instruction for individual students, groups of students, or entire classes based on the results of the assessment. So this approval would be for this coming school year and for four future school years as long as costs do not exceed three percent of the previous year. That financial impact, so for us, for grades K through 8, that would be approximately eleven thousand five hundred students at fourteen dollars fifty cents per student. So total expenditure, and also, an online annual license at a cost of a thousand dollars. So that total expenditure would be one hundred and sixty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars from the general fund. Any questions? For the third action item, I would like to welcome our secondary director, Shelley Fallows, to discuss the Formative by News, well, I've heard it pronounced two ways, News ELA, or some people read it as one word, Newzella. Okay, so I don't know which one is correct, I should have watched some YouTube videos, but whatever it is, the online platform contract.
Good evening. All right, so yes, I am here this evening to tell you how awesome and wonderful Formative by Newzella is. If you'll go ahead and move to the next slide. So I want us to start with a quick video from Formative, because it'll give you a visual of what this platform looks like and how our teachers use it. So if you'll go ahead and click that link for me. No, back in the, oh, you've got it there. Yep, that top right one, right-click on it, is it not letting you? Okay, well, that's okay. Oh, there it is. That's it. Push, push that triangle, yep, and then that bottom right to make it big. Do we have sound? Uh-oh. Okay, well, let's go ahead and keep moving then. All right, if you'll go ahead and go back to my slides for me, please. So Formative by Newzella is a web-based learning tool. It allows our teachers to monitor and assess student learning in real time. So this first slide that she'll show you highlights some of those main pieces, if you'll go back one more for me. Thank you. So it can be used in daily instruction, classroom assessments, independent student practice. So teachers can even click that score, and then it'll develop a practice set based on that individualized student's assessment data. So it, it does some powerful things for our teachers and our kids. And then that last item there, it provides collaborate, a tool to be used to strengthen the efficiency in the work that our PLCs do, our professional learning communities. So one platform for instruction, assessment, and adjusting in real time. So this one highlights part of what I'll show you on our quote, which includes a vetted item bank. So Formative was recently purchased by Newzella, News ELA, whichever way we say it around the, the country, and then Newzella is a very large company, and the exciting thing is, is when that happened, they were able to purchase different banks from other companies and actually hire people who are vetting items, creating items, tagging them to standards, tagging them to DOK levels, that depth of knowledge, which is a piece that our teachers spend a lot of time, and I think all the leaders in the room said, yes, they do, they spend a lot of time doing that work, because we want to make sure what we're assessing aligns to what the standards say, so that then we're developing instructional activities along the way that prepare them to show that level of understanding. So over twenty-five thousand-plus items, they are right now mainly in those four core areas, heaviest in middle school, but they are constantly expanding, and it will be in six through 12. And then you can see in the box there, all of those different items. They have all of the same item types and more that students are exposed to on the milestones. So the beauty of having this tool is our, our teachers can provide them with assessment experiences that are like what they're going to see. We can see how our kids are doing, we can prepare them for that stamina for that test at the end of the year. A few more things, of course, with AI, they've really put some great features into Formative where teachers can, teams can ask it, you know, I need some questions around this standard, and it will start to generate AI items. Of course, we, we as teachers are going to use our skills to decide if it's a good item or not, but it's a way to get them started and save them some time in that beginning piece. There's also an ability to have assessments and instructional sets in here, be teacher-paced or be student-paced, and even be gamified. They provide a lockdown browser, which is part of our request, that actually locks out other programs, so that we can make sure that they're in a secure testing environment. And then the last piece there, they're able to see their data in this very colorful, well-organized, different ways to click by standard or by question type and see where our kids struggling. And I'm teacher A, you're teacher B, well, my kids really struggled on question one, but yours didn't. What's, how did you, what did you do in your classroom and the learning experience that you were able to get that data? And, you know, we're really, we're really looking at, what did the learning experience look like? What can we do to keep refining it and help our kids all find that mastery level? Keep going for me. Yep, all right, and then most importantly, I wanted you to see the why, so that visual is showing you that it's all about, like Dr. Leduff and Dr. Brown were saying, student success. We're able to develop those learning outcomes, determine how we want to assess them, create the learning experiences, and then keep using that assessment tool to get Formative data along the way and modify our instructional experiences. So ultimately, it's going to provide us with consistency and coherence, standards alignment, collaboration, clear expectations, data-driven decisions, vertical and horizontal alignment, instructional continuity, and efficient resource allocation. We are currently in year four of having this tool, if you guys choose to approve it, the purchase. This is year four. We have trained our staff in the use of that. They were able to, to engage in an asynchronous PL module, and then we had teachers all over the county yesterday engaged in PLC lead teams and even full teams designing comment assessments. All right, so then I want to read the very last piece here. So the superintendent recommends authorizing the purchase of Formative by Newzella Gold Licenses for Students, Teachers, and Administrators in Grade 612, along with access to the locked browser option and the vetted item bank, so that we can continue. browser option and the vetted item bank, so that we can continue this work with our teachers. And that total expenditure will be $88,153.01 from Newzella for the FY '26 school year. And I think that is all of it. Do you have, and I want to read this last piece, this approval would be for this coming school year. So this year as well as four future years, as long as the costs do not exceed 3% of the previous year. What questions do you have?
So, so one question. I see the, the sales order that has that item bank. Is that that paid question?
It is, yes. Now, our teachers can create their own items. They can upload PDFs, Word documents, and it will actually, they're, they're, this is getting better and better. We've had to use some support from them some, but it will take those and put those in their bank. We are able to take the item banks from the state that have been created in math and upload those all the way. They helped us get all of those in there. So they've been pulling for, they can pull from all of those places.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
Anything else? Consent?
All right, thank you.
Okay, the final action item we would like to request that our board take action on tonight is the GNETs Intergovernmental Agreement. Our Special Education Director, Amy Wadley, will come forward to discuss further our MOU for GNETs service.
Good evening to the board. Can you hear me? Dr. Leduff?
Hi. Thank you for having me today.
So I do believe that most of you are aware of this, but I want to add some more context for those of you who may not be aware. But Barrow County Schools has been hosting the GNETs program for the past two years, and we have shared that program with Jefferson City Schools here. And for your awareness, GNETs is the Georgia Network of Educational and Therapeutic Supports Program. This program was a separate school in Athens-Clark County at Rutland Academy since the 70s. And three years ago, they shut their doors and they challenged our school districts to serve these, to serve these students, this population, have a good program for them. And so Barrow County Schools said, absolutely, we're going to do that. And we split it with Jefferson City Schools. But at this time, there are now two more school districts who would like to partner with us in the GNETs program. And that is Oconee County Schools and then also Social Circle City Schools. So the contracting school districts seek to provide comprehensive educational and therapeutic support services for their students who exhibit intense, social, emotional, or behavioral challenges at frequency, intensity, and duration that prevents them from benefiting educationally from the special education and related services that they currently have available to them in their school districts. And so I want to point out just some highlights. That would be the, the difference for the IGA we're presenting now compared to the one that we've had for the past couple of years. And I'll make this brief. But it would be, of course, adding two more school districts, that we would now be paying 25% rather than 50% for this cost. Also, the districts will contribute to necessary supplies and equipment to include specific needs for the students. Jefferson City was doing that anyway, but it wasn't explicitly listed in the IGA, so it is now. Also, the GNETs Special Education Coordinator is now a Barrow County employee rather than a recent employee. There's no financial impact there. We were already paying half of her paycheck. But now she is a part of our team officially. Also, special education services that would be beyond what GNETs would provide, like occupational therapy, physical therapy, any of those services, that would be on the LEAs, the other LEAs, to be able to provide reimbursement for that or supply their own people. And then also, if our GNETs program is unable to meet the behavioral supports above and beyond what our GNETs program already provides, then those districts would also have to, you know, contribute for that. Okay? So those are the, the primary differences. Financial impact. Barrow County School System would, if everybody is in agreement, we will now pay 25% of the total costs associated with the employees rather than 50% in addition to other expenses necessary to support the GNETs program. The general fund budget will pay our portion of staff salaries and the IDEA grant. That would be used to fund additional costs such as supplies and therapeutic support services. The total estimated cost for the program is anticipated to be $657,000. So we would be paying 25% of that rather than 50%, which is $164,250 as opposed to All right, so the superintendent recommends signing the attached intergovernmental agreement with Jefferson City School District, the Oconee County School District, and the Social Circle City School District to partner in providing comprehensive educational and therapeutic support services to their students who exhibit intense, social, emotional, and/or behavioral challenges. Okay. Are there any questions from the board that I can answer?
My only question is, looking at the contract, where's the price? What page is the price on?
It will change every year. It's because it's employees, so it's just our cost. We will send them a bill every month.
Okay. Okay, so right now, we're saying $164,250 approximately is what our...
That is, that is what we would pay for the staff if we're paying 25% rather than the 50%, which is what we've been paying for the past two years.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So, so there's no increase in staff, even though we're handling two more districts?
No, at this point in time, there's no need for that with partnering with these two other districts. That is bringing three more students to our school system at this point in time.
How many students altogether are we?
So altogether, I thought you guys might want to know that. So we will have five students at County Line Elementary, and this is including all four schools, okay? And then we would have four at Wynder Barrow High School, and Russell Middle School would have four. And then we do have consult students. So currently, we have three students that are receiving consultative services in Jefferson City, and Oconee County Schools will also have three. So six stu, three to six will be for consultative services. But those students are in their home districts, and they're receiving those services from the coordinator.
I just want to take a second, Ms. Wadley, and say thank you for your work put in by the SED Department, the whole team, to serve more students and reduce costs to our citizens. That's in line with our board's newly developed core beliefs. I know that this has been an undertaking, having served with the Special Education Department. It's been a big move. And so kudos to y'all for getting two additional districts to split these costs and save our citizens money.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you so much.
And I'd just like to commend you and your team, Ms. Wadley. The reason that we get these requests, board members, is because regionally, we are known for the product that we provide to our special education students. So when there's an opportunity to join our team, I think we have other systems that jump at that chance for, to partner with us to serve children. So thank you for that work, Ms. Wadley.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for the support. We couldn't do it without you guys. We appreciate you.
Thank you. We'll consider this after executive session. All right, we'll move on to our Chief of Staff Report, Dr. Kurtz.
All right, good evening. Thanks, as always, for having us. The Chief of Staff Board of Education Report contains four information items and eight action items for the August 5th, 2025 Board of Education meeting. The first information item is a staffing update. In late June, based on some, some budgetary needs, we were tasked with developing and implementing a targeted hiring freeze. Through that plan, our Human Resources Department worked with district and school leaders to identify unfilled positions where the workload could be shifted to existing staff. While the results will increase workloads for existing staff, the plan was developed in a manner that ensures we still have the resources we need to provide high-quality educational services to our kids. Open positions weren't evenly distributed, so there were a number of moves that needed to be made. We were able to make more than half of those moves through voluntary, staff members looking to change grade levels or change schools. Those where, that were not voluntary moves were exclusively based on number of students in small programs where we were able to collapse or move to another location because the programs were so narrow or enrollments were low. In making these moves, we were able to cut 21 and a half positions or 21 and a half freeze, 21 and a half positions originally. While we froze positions, all of those positions were unfilled. So these were not any actual staff members that were here. We're continuing to evaluate as positions come open through attrition. I've identified three others that we may be able to freeze right now, but as we look for others coming open through attrition, we'll review each of those closely as to whether or not that workload can be absorbed elsewhere and what the impact might be on learning and safety against the board's priorities there to make sure that we are being efficient with the budget, but also effective in our work. As a follow-up to Mr. Callaway's question, you able to pull up those two charts? As a follow-up to Mr. Callaway's question from last week, we have, do we have those two charts? We were asked to examine teaching allocations in relationship to other districts around us. We chose five districts of similar size. I apologize for not having this available to you. I'll get this to you. Similar size and similar demographics, because there are some economies of scale where it really is not an accurate comparison to take a super-large district or a particularly small one and compare. We selected Lowndes, Jackson, Bartow, Walton, and Carroll. We selected all teachers and we used the October CPI report, which is submitted to the state by all districts, and that gives us a good apples-to-apples comparison. So at that time, we had 12.6 students per teacher. In looking at those other counties, Lowndes was the closest to us at 13.5 students per teacher, and Carroll and Walton were the furthest from us at 15.2 students per teacher. If we took those numbers and looked at those against our total student population, using those student-to-teacher ratios, you know, based on our student-to-teacher ratio, we'd have 1,227 teachers. Based on a slightly lower ratio, like Lowndes, we'd have 1,148. And then going all the way to something like Carroll or Walton, it would be 1,020. There's some reasons that we wouldn't want to go exactly with another county's numbers. There are a number of pieces that we look at specifically in here where it gets pretty far into the weeds in terms of English-language learners or special-needs students and some of those types of populations that might require a different service ratio. But these are metrics that we look at each October. Dr. Thompson's department puts together, well, I say October, we really don't get the data from the state till November. We review this and try to look at what metrics we have, not just in teaching, but in all of our departments. Where are we out of line? Why are we out of line? Should we be out of line? And what can we do to make sure we're as efficient and as effective as possible? So we will review this again in the fall as we start to look at next year's budget and start to look at allocations for next year. Any questions about staffing, our current frees, or our ratios?
Thank you for that update, Dr. Kurtz.
Of course. Our next action item, Mr. Purno will come share some information about CM at Risk, I think.
Yeah, so we've got, we've got three information items tonight with system operations. And so we'll share a series of photos here with you for project updates. This is our classroom pod at Wynder Barrow High School and greenhouse facilities at Wynder Barrow, as well as Appalachia. And very pleased with the outcome of the projects here. Really tied things together nicely at both schools. And we had a, I guess, an orientation event or open house event last week, and I believe there's another one taking place right now at Wynder Barrow High School. And kudos to Charles Black Construction. They did a terrific job for us. Joey Murphy, our, our project manager. And so we're, we're ready for students and excited that they have those, those facilities now in place. So that'll be our, that'll be our last update on those, a couple of projects. Any questions on those? Okay. All right, I believe the next one is renovations at C-FIT. And we heard some discussion earlier about the security vestibules, and this is the last campus that we needed to complete those improvements on. And so, so those are now in place at C-FIT, the security vestibule. Separate entrance there for our school safety and security team and the visitors that they have coming into the building. So we're, we're able to separate that traffic. And then we did some other improvements while we were there, painting the gymnasium. And we don't have photos of a, of a larger meeting space that we created two spaces in, it'll be two classrooms now that kind of helped bring kids in from the mobiles into the building. So again, kudos to Charles Black Construction, tight timeframe on that one. And Joey Murphy for helping to oversee that and, and help pull it all together. It turned out very well. Okay, our last item of information here, Dr. Leduff pointed out the fine work of our maintenance team under Greg Webb's leadership, and we appreciate that very much. We also wanted to kind of take a minute to look at our custodial program. These folks have worked extremely hard this summer, as they do every, every summer. We're taking apart a piece of carpet cleaning equipment there. Those are our custodial trainers, Irving and Cherry, and I'm sure they got that figured out right there. I'm confident that they did. But there's all, all sorts of tasks that our folks are completing each day. They're high dusting, they're wiping down surfaces, of course, working on our floors, deep cleaning our carpets, our restrooms, top scrubbing and recoding our, our vinyl floors. And they, they just do a terrific job. And they pay attention to the details, as you see there, getting in those corners and along the baseboards, and they take a lot of pride in what they do. You'll see some pictures of different groups of custodians, the teams at the schools. And, you know, our greatest asset is our people. And when they're out there working together as teams, as they do, you know, they really, they really can go a long way. I like to show this picture, and it really doesn't do it justice, but I know I've said in the past, we're furniture movers for about the first week after school lets out, and then about midway through the summer, we're furniture movers again. They're taking all this stuff out of the classrooms, clean it entirely, and then put it back in. So again, kudos to our custodial teams. They do a terrific job, and, and we're just pleased to have them out there looking after our schools. Thank you.
All right, and I can attest to that, our schools look great, so much so that as my wife needed to move furniture, she had me come in on the weekend, so it didn't, she didn't pull it across there and scratch her nicely wax floors, and I think a lot. I wasn't the only one there that weekend moving furniture or helping, helping a spouse out. Our buildings look fabulous. In terms of action items, we have eight this evening. The first one is removing quite a few personnel policies from the table for public comment and placing them on the agenda for approval. So I'm going to go through all of these and ask for questions at the end. The superintendent recommends removing Board Policy G A D, Professional Learning Opportunities; Board Policy G A E, Complaints and Grievances; Board Policy G A M A, Drug-Free Workplace; Board Policy G A M B, Possession of Weapons by Employees; Board Policy G A N, Employee Tobacco Use; Board Policy G A N A, Infectious Disease; Board Policy G A R H, Employee Leaves and Absences; Board Policy G A R K, Employee Vacation; Board Policy G B C, Professional Personnel Recruitment; Board Policy G B I A, Teacher Evaluation Appeals; Board Policy G B N, Professional Personnel Termination; Board Policy G C K, Classified Personnel Suspension. From the public comment for approving these policies, he also further recommends Board Removing Board Policy G B A B, Pay for Performance from Public Comment, for removing or rescinding at the August 5th Board Meeting. Any questions about those policies? We did receive no public comment on any of these policies in the month that they've been on the table. Thank you. Now it's time for our Construction Manager at Risk. Purno?
Okay, so I'm going to speak about our Construction Manager at Risk for system athletic improvements, and then we'll ask Mr. Jason Ayers to come up and present a number of Transportation Department action items. Transportation Department action items. Athletic improvements are needed within the district, including but not limited to athletic facilities at the Barrow Arts and Sciences Academy. This will be baseball, softball, stadium, track and field, gymnasium, and support facilities. Track resurfacing and fence replacement are examples of needed improvements elsewhere around the district. Other potential building and site improvements may also be evaluated as part of the system athletic improvements project. It's necessary to put together a team to help us as the owner to evaluate, plan, design, budget, and construct these projects. First step in building this team was to name an architect, and our Board of Education approved Cunningham, Forehand Matthews, and Moore on May 6th of this year. The final step in putting this team together is approval of a construction manager. To that end, a project advertisement was issued, which included notice of a mandatory pre-proposal meeting. Six firms attended this meeting on May 29, and four firms submitted proposals on June 10. Our project manager, Joey Murphy, Director of Maintenance Greg Webb, and myself, along with our architect, who served in a consultative role, poured over these proposals and met on multiple occasions to examine the firms on a number of evaluation factors. This was a very difficult decision, and I say that in a positive way because we had four quality firms proposing on this work. Taking all that, all the evaluation factors into account, one contractor stood out slightly above the others. In terms of financial impact, there is a $65 million stated cost limitation associated with the project. This is a number that gives contractors an idea of the potential value of the project, but actual project cost will be brought before the board as a series of guaranteed maximum price figures after the various project components are planned, designed, and priced. The only cost item that the board would be approving with a specific construction manager recommendation is $50,000 for pre-construction services. And so with that said, we're asking the superintendent to recommend Paris Construction as construction manager at risk for the system athletic improvement project.
Thank you.
Mr. Consent?
Mr. Jason Ayers, our Director of Transportation, has a number of action items related to our Transportation Department and maintaining and purchasing buses.
Get y'all this exciting stuff, get out all this other boring stuff. So anyway, buses, we need to buy a few, need to fix a few, so let's get rolling on that. Anyway, I'm sorry, I needed to get up and move around. It was just one of them things, but. Right out of the gate, superintendent recommends Rush Truck Centers International Bus for the supply of 1072 passenger buses. Bus bids were put on the Georgia procurement website and Barrow County Schools website to receive bids for, for the purchase of new buses. Rush Truck Centers International is the only vendor who submitted the bid. Rush Truck Centers bid is $145,000 per bus. All buses in our fleet will be equipped with air conditioning. These are in-stock buses, so their delivery is pretty much immediate when we, when we pay for these buses, so. Financial impacts, price per bus, $145,000 times 10 buses, that's $1,450,000, so for total purchase amount. State allocations roughly around $400,000, that'll be offset with splosh to complete the purchase and everything, so. Okay.
Mr. Ayers, since we have, since school's about to kick off, is, would that be a more appropriate item to move to vote, to vote on tonight so that we could get those buses here if they're available, as you said?
I'm game for that one. I've got, I'll just, I'll just give you the politics of that thing. There's about seven buses over there that don't have AC that's going to be on route. Those few hundred children would appreciate it, and so would those drivers. So absolutely, ma'am, thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move that.
We'll move that, that's nice.
I'll throw you a gift card if I need to.
We're happy you're willing to talk.
There you go. Heat index has been kind of brutal, y'all. I understand that.
Yeah, it has.
Y'all ready?
Yeah.
All right. I was going to hold up on that, and I didn't want to mess it up, so. Next recommendation, superintendent recommends the approval of the following vendors for outsourced bus repairs. Y'all see the list right there, I just, you know, you can look at that if you've got any questions. Summary on that, currently the Transportation Department has six mechanics to maintain a fleet of 212 school buses. Each bus must be inspected every 20 days and serviced as needed. When repairs are needed, they go beyond the ability of the mechanics to perform. We outsource these repairs. A pool of vendors is needed to complete repairs in a timely manner and service vehicles in a, and service vehicles in a preferred manner. For instance, one vendor doesn't have a shop in which the repair buses does not operate. I'm sorry, I just lost my train of thought right there. For instance, one vendor doesn't have a shop in which to repair buses but does not operate for service trucks for the field repairs. Occasionally, a repair vendor may have buses in line for repairs and cannot get to our bus in a timely manner. Obviously, we're just not the only ones standing in that line, so with buses needing repaired everywhere. A pool of vendors allows flexibility to get buses repaired in a timely manner while still maintaining costs. This is a three-year bid with potential increase in cost due to inflation, tariffs, and growth. Supporting documents, bus outsourced vendors, 2026 to 2028 results, you've got the PDF there, estimated $500,000 per year, and that's out of general fund. Good? All right.
Consent?
Consent.
All right. Next one up, superintendent recommends awarding the fuel, petroleum, and oil lubrication bid to Basel Oil Company. The bid was put out on Georgia procurement website and Barrow County Schools website. Basel Oil Company is recommended due to the rate per gallon, which is $196, per gallon for gasoline and $263 per gallon for diesel. BCS, BCSs to receive priority deliveries and supply shortages, in the shortage event, average response time of 30 minutes for emergency delivery, and the ability of the bidder to provide lubricants as requested. Last three items on the bid form, if you look at that. So you just have to break it down and kind of go line by line to see, you know, see how they kind of excel and kind of outdo the other ones. This is a three-year bid with potential increase due to inflation, tariffs, and growth. Now, we don't anticipate anything, you know, fuel looks like it's hopefully slowing down, so we hope it'll just keep, you know, kind of deflating there. But financial impact, 1.2 million per year, and that's general fund.
Consent?
Uh huh.
Next thing, superintendent recommends the use of the following vendors for brake parts, batteries, alternator starters, and additional parts, materials, and shop supplies. You got, you got the list right there. Part of them are local vendors as well, so we try to, try to keep things in, you know, local best we can, support local business and stuff. The bid was put on Georgia procurement website and Barrow County Schools website. Having three vendors allows flexibility, and if another is out when item is needed, approval to use all highlighted vendors for any additional parts requested during the year is requested due to the fact that five, that five of the vendors of aftermarket parts are local and able to deliver us to us quickly when needed. One vendor carries bulk amounts of cleaning and shop supplies. The last vendors are original equipment manufacturer parts vendors. The core on brake shoes and battery can be returned for refund once the parts have been installed and the cores returned. The total price shown is the initial payment for brake, shoe slash battery plus core and does not reflect the expected refund once the cores returned. Again, this is a three-year bid with potential increase in cost due to inflation, tariffs, and growth. Two to do, supporting documents, you've got the PDF there for bus parts and supplies. Financial impact estimated $775,000 per year.
Consent?
Yes.
Next one up, tires. Superintendent recommends approval of Southern Tire Mart LLC for fleet tires. The bid was put on Georgia procurement website and Barrow County Schools website. Southern Tire Mart is recommended because they provide better service at a higher level of quality concerning the recap aspect of the product line. Again, this is a three-year bid with potential increase in cost due to inflation, tariffs, and growth. Again, you got the PDF right there, estimated cost per year around $200,000.
Consent?
Uh huh.
All right. This is a lot, man, I didn't realize I had as many pages. All right. This recommendation, superintendent recommends approval of Connor Automotive for our white fleet service. That's our maintenance truck, service trucks, anything that's not yellow in the county. That's pretty much what our white fleet consists of. The bid was put on Georgia, Georgia procurement website and Barrow County Schools website. The white fleet consists of 87 trucks, vans, and SUVs used by maintenance, technology, transportation, school nutrition, and other departments. It's a three-year bid with a potential increase of cost due to inflation, tariffs, and growth. Got the PDF there if you need to look at that. Financial impact estimated about $80,000 per year, and that's general fund as well.
Consent?
Yes.
All right. Give me a breath on this one. Superintendent recommends continuing use of wet fuel cards for fueling buses off-site. Due to the existing infrastructure of our tank limitations, do not allow all the buses fueled at one location. We have some infrastructure needs that we're going to hopefully address in the months coming, so I should be back in front of you guys once we get some, some parts of that figured out. But we use those just to keep us flexible, and we don't waste time or fuel, getting fuel if that makes sense. So estimated $400,000 per year, and that's general fund as well.
Consent?
Superintendent recommends continued the use of Cowamp Sinovia for the multifunction tablet used to support fleet functions. Summary on that is Cowamp Sinovia tablets support the drivers with fleet tracking, route information, clocking in and out, and various other fleet functions. Supporting documents there is the contract, you can see that if you need to. Estimated at $160,000 per year for the next four years to support the established duty cycle of the equipment, which at what time we renegotiate contract, get new tablets and all that, if we stay with that particular vendor, so.
Consent?
And that's all I have. Believe it or not.
All right.
I ain't seen you guys in a while, it's good to be back, but next time I'll stay a little quieter, so.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers.
All right, thank you.
All right. Now we need to go into executive session. May I have a motion to go into executive, executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee, or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent?
Second.
Motion by, is that Ms. Ward? And second by Ms. Kelly. All right. Any discussion on favor? All right. We will be back shortly.
Hello, my name is Nicholas Dawson, and I'm a senior here at the Barrow Arts and Sciences Academy. I came here to Bassa not knowing that there was a robotics program in the first place, but I came here to Bassa because it was the new big school on the block. I remember in middle school, they came to us at Westside and said, there's a new high school coming up, and we're building it right now, and you can enroll. Of course, I'm going to take that opportunity. This is a brand-new school with materials that are top-of-the-line, highest-tech, brand-new. And I just took the opportunity. I saw a good opportunity, I took it, and it was the Barrow Arts and Sciences Academy. How could I not accept something like that if I'm going to the computer science field? In high school, this is going to sound really bad, but in high school, the most memorable experiences I have are the worst experiences I have. But I think that's because after I found the solution, it gave me the most sense of accomplishment, the most sense of pride, because I finally found out the error that was causing everything. It was usually I typed something wrong, or I put in the wrong variable, and when I finally just saw that little mistake and fixed it, everything started working, everything was fluent, everything started going along like it was lively. And I was so happy to see this thing I was working on for the past, like, month, two weeks, day even, start working again. And I was always so happy if I had to pick someone from everyone I've ever met, it has to be Ms. Knowles. Ms. Knowles has been my computer science teacher for the longest time. I've had her through APS, APCSP, game design, APCSA, and even now in work-based learning, I go to her and ask her questions, and she still knows the answers to all of them. Ms. Knowles is a very, very good teacher. She'll always just, like, stand up, walk around, help people with problems. She'll never say something like, just look it up on Google. She'll go to it, see the problem, say, how can we work through this together? My future plans right now for graduation are kind of iffy, I'd say. Right now, I'm, I've been accepted into UGA. I've also been given the honor of getting an internship at Lockheed Martin. My parents want me to go to college, so I will. And the short, the short and sweet of it, I'm going to college because my parents asked me to, and I love my parents. My biggest dream right now is if I get out of college, get an internship, get a job, in my free time, start making a video game, which I'm very proud of. I've had this idea in my head for years for this video game. It's just generally, I need this experience on how to program, how to draw, how to make music, do all these things, how to make a video game in general. What's the process? I'm trying to get as much experience as I can right now and do work-based learning through people, through talking to other people in general, just learn how to make things, make a video game. I've a lot of small, tiny accomplishments that I'm very proud of, things I can't even remember but I know happened, that I'm always happy about. But if I had to name something, it'd be what I'm doing right now. Working on the Mono Project, which is a website, I started from scratch when I didn't even know how to make a website, how to know how to make an interactable interface with a website, all this and that, and communicate with an SQL, a database, that actually stores all this information. When I started my work-based learning semester, like, last semester, I had absolutely no clue what I was doing, what I was willing to learn, and I learned from every possible source I could. It's really taught me a lot about cybersecurity, how to build a website, how to maintain a website, what the process is to build and create and maintain all this and that for a simple website. I think the biggest accomplishment right now I've had in high school is the connections I've made along this whole path through not only engineering software, but through with people too. I know how to communicate better, I know how to build, I know how to engineer, I know what it feels like to be working a part of a team, and I think that's the biggest thing you can learn from anything, how to communicate, how to work, how to work as a team. And I think that's the biggest accomplishment anyone can get. Try your best, always be willing to learn, and most importantly, never give up what you're doing. Always follow that dream, always follow the goal that you have, and never, ever let anyone tell you otherwise. Always follow the dream.
Sims Academy is a career-prep school available to all high school students in Barrow County. Daily, Sims is filled with students taking dual enrollment courses, industry-specific CTAE classes, and Sims offered high school classes like construction. Pending the student's schedule, they may spend all day at Sims or utilize the BCSS organized shuttles to or from their home schools.
Sims is also home to many of Barrow County School System's unique programs such as the Newcomer Academy, YES Program, and STEP Program.
Sims was the first school on the Innovation Campus before being joined by Linear Technical College, Barrow Arts and Science Academy, and Austin Road Elementary School. It began with a mission that continues to evolve to ensure the success of BCSS students and our local community.
The YES Program at Sims is a class for students with disabilities that are in their senior year of high school. The YES Program is partnered with the Goodwill Northeast Georgia, Georgia Vocational Rehabilitation Agency, and High School High Tech with the goal of helping seniors be better prepared for the independent employment after high school.
Goodwill staff works with participants of the youth job training program to set career goals and equip students with the necessary skills to enter the workforce. YES participants can earn high school credit for job readiness training classes and paid work experience. The YES Program has three phases. Phase one, one transition class at Sims Academy during the fall semester of senior year. Phase two, a paid internship in the spring of senior year if the student has proven to be motivated and reliable. Phase three, full-time job placement after graduation.
The Student Transition Enrichment Program, also known as STEP, is a full-time, year-long, school-to-work transition program for students with significant cognitive disabilities who have the goal of supported employment after high school. The STEP Program provides supportive work experiences in a variety of community business settings, as well as within common ground, the cafeteria, and various CTAE classrooms. It also gives students the opportunity to practice self-determination, self-advocacy, and independent living skills. This program has an application process, and students must be accepted for the IEP team to consider this service.
Sims Academy students can build a strong foundation for their culinary careers through our dual enrollment partnership with Linear Technical College. Highly qualified instructors from Linear Technical College teach students in the career and technical education programs available to students through Sims Academy.
The Culinary Arts Program prepares students for employment within many facets of the food service industry. Students will obtain technical skills training focusing on food preparation, sanitation, nutrition, marketing, catering, management fundamentals, and work ethics.
The Prep Cook Technical Certificate of Credit provides skills for entry into the food services preparation area as a prep cook. Topics include food services Topics include food services history, safety and sanitation, purchasing and food control, nutrition and menu development and design, along with the principles of cooking. Students who complete this certificate are positioned to earn several additional certificates that lead to a diploma or degree in culinary arts.
Sims offers students a hands-on opportunity to learn construction, carpentry, and electrical fundamentals. The construction pathway consists of four courses ranging from fundamentals and safety to carpentry and electrical skills. These courses are designed to help prepare students for careers in the construction industry, and many graduates find work in the construction industry after completing this pathway. The motto that students have in the class is that anything worth doing is worth doing right the first time.
The Barrow County Newcomer Academy was established in 2017 with the purposes of supporting high school students as they transition to life in the United States. Since its inception, the Newcomer Academy has served speakers of many different languages from all around the world. Instructors work with students to develop their English and product support in their academic classes. Additionally, the Newcomer Academy serves to support students with many unique challenges of adapting to life in new culture surrounded by a new language.
Sims Academy in Barrow County offers high school students a dynamic career prep experience with dual enrollment, CTAE classes, and unique courses. Sims is a direct path to a brighter future.
Hi, my name is Barbie Culp and I'm the Barrow County Mentor Coordinator. And today I'm here with Mary, and she is a mentor at Holson Beck Elementary.
I am. I am so lucky because I have a second grader. He's so sweet, so sweet. I was so glad to see him back after the landfill fiasco and they were digital learning, and so I was delighted to see him back. He's young enough, he still likes to give hugs. I wanted to do something at Holson Beck because I live very close there, and I think I volunteered for reading and you suggested the mentoring program. Well, when I was working, I was mentored at the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and I appreciated it very much. And then I became a mentor eventually there. And so when you approached about the program here in the county, I thought, "That's perfect." I don't know if I'm a typical mentor. I love children. I think that's the basic requirement, is that you care about them and you're sincere in caring about them. And if you do that, that's really all they need. They will be like little flowers to the sun. I take a little craft of some kind, not expensive, and we start with that, and then that just gives us a chance to just kind of talk while we're busy with our fingers doing things. I also take a little snack, I hope that's okay, you know, a little pack of crackers or cookies, and he's always happy about that. If you're thinking about mentoring, the best thing I can tell you is you get back so much more than you ever give. It's just heartwarming, and I walk out of the school every week with a big smile on my face because to be with such a sweet young man.
I think mentoring is a lot simpler than what people think it is. I think it sounds scary, it sounds overwhelming, it sounds like a huge commitment. And while it is a commitment, it is not, it's simple. It's a simple process of just caring for someone and listening, really. So again, we're always looking for mentors in Barrow County. If you work from home and have 30 minutes a week to spare, if you are retired, if you're a parent and you have 30 minutes to spare, we'd love to have you join our mentoring program and spend time with a student.
I think that there are a lot of children of all ages who would benefit from knowing that someone cares enough to be with them on a regular basis.
This is where traditions begin and legacies are built.
At Barrow Arts and Sciences Academy, we're sparking innovations of tomorrow by empowering our students today. Our academic course offerings are rigorous to prepare students for life beyond high school. And we offer a variety of art programs that encourage students to express themselves, no matter the medium. We are a non-traditional school where students will discover their passion, prepare for their future, and explore the intersection where the arts and sciences complement one another. This is Bassa, and we are the Blazers.
Hi, I am Lynn Tillman. You can refer to me as the Tillminator. That's what I've been being called since 1989 when the Terminator movies were popular. And I teach music at County Line Elementary School, and this is my room. I have all kinds of things that I have acquired through the fundraising website called Donor's Shoes, got some kongas and bongos, and I have this sweet, totally sweet, 1970's vintage set of wood blocks. Love those. I have some African djembe's. I got some basses. We got, oh, we got a big doghouse bass, that's awesome too. We have, I really don't know what they're called, but I call them flappophones. We got bells, we got tubano drums, I got a xylophone. These, these are mine personally, nobody gets to touch those except me. And I got a drum set, which we are rocking on all the time. I first realized that I could potentially be good as a teacher back when I was in middle school, and I played the flute in Gwinnett County Sweetwater Middle School. And my band director realized that I'd already known my parts, and he asked me to help some of the people, not only in my section but in other sections, to learn their parts better. So we'd go back in the practice room, I would teach them their parts, and I've always had a way of being able to break it down to its absolute simplest forms, that you don't even have to understand music to get what it is, and to teach on a need-to-know basis. This is all you need to know to be able to play this. Kind of like earlier when I was doing the basses, and I said, "All you got to do is press the yellow dot." They don't have to know that that's an E. They don't have to know that it's an E chord. All they have to know is, right now, press the yellow dot. When you see my footstep on yellow, you press yellow. The simplest form to get them to have success as quickly as possible. And it was back in middle school that I first realized that I had that in me and that I could get people to learn with, down to the simplest thing.
Teachers do amazing things.
Of course. Teachers do fun activities.
I want them to know that teachers, we're not perfect. We can come in and we think, "I've got a plan, I'm doing good, I am going to teach," and then you come in here and you totally blow it. And sometimes you just blow it, and the kids laugh at you, and then we move on and you fix it, and now I'm going to fix it. Okay, all right, so I was doing the...
My name's Hannah Hollingsworth, and I'm a senior at Appalachia High School. In my childhood, I grew up with a single mom and an older brother, so I was roughhousing around, you know, just trying to make it day by day. I was very independent as a kid, which honestly led me up to me being like as strong-willed and independent as I am today.
All right, we are back in regular session. We have three action items we need to approve tonight. The GNets IGA, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Callaway, second by Ms. Hendricks. All in favor? All right, thank you. We have the Foothills Collaborative MOU, could I have a motion to approve this?
So moved by Dr. Carey.
Second. Motion by Dr. Carey, second by Ms. Hendricks. Ms. Lord. All right. All in favor? Motion carries. And new buses, did I motion to Mr. Callaway?
Second.
Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and second?
Me.
Ms. Maddox. All right, all in favor? All right, motion passes. All right, and then we have tonight's personnel report. Have a motion to approve report?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Kelly, second by Ms. Bradford. All in favor? Motion carries. All right, our next meeting will be Tuesday, August 5 at 6:00 p.m., and we wish you all a great first day of school on Friday. We'll be thinking about you. All right, we're adjourned.